Mark is that you up there?
Yes, it is Mr. Hogan.
Hey, can you hear some lights on the stage for us please?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for right now.
Okay, thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Do 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 do. No, 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 no video. No, so no video. Hmm, needs to interrupt me. Well. Guess that works.
Any comments, uh, maybe some comments? Oh man, thank you, perfect.
Mm, come on.
He's my brother, not my son. I understand that I don't think that's what I need. Yeah, but he ain't my friend.
Yeah, his rent is broken.
That.
Hey buddy.
Hey.
Oh, you're up here, good.
Mm.
Alright, I'll just-
I don't know, it just sounds like quarter to four.
I know, waiting for-
That is also a light thing, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Um, just a minute.
What do you look for?
Just that, there we go. Alice.
Sounds like she's in the middle of rehearsal.
She is. Twenty three, fifteen, twenty six. Okay. Alright, I'll be right there like that. For now. Okay, we're okay.
Do we need to do mic checks?
Yeah, but give me... Alright, I'm gonna go and just... Okay, testing. Okay, good. Okay, good.
How do you mean? This is two minutes over. Uh, yeah, let me see what I can do. I'll see what I can do.
Let's see what we got.
No, that's not-
Testing.
Doctor Singh.
Testing. Testing, testing, that's hot.
Doctor Singh, can you test that microphone in the middle again?
Yeah, I'm testing, that's hot. And Mark, I would wait to move anything as far as adjustments, 'cause she's got levels that she knows is different for each one.
It just didn't sound like anything came from that mic testing order, is why.
Yeah, give me just a second. Ah, I don't even know what I'm gonna change, alright. Testing. That's hot. So- Testing.
One more time, just saying, on this screen. Yes. Okay. Doctor Singh, try that one one more time, I was getting audio levels from it.
You mean this one?
Absolutely. Ah, I need to turn that down.
Testing.
Doctor Singh, can you test those last two for me, please?
Testing, retesting. Testing, testing, thank you. Testing, testing, testing.
Try it now.
Testing, 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 testing.
I can keep an eye on that one.
Testing. Mr. Wallace, the microphone is hot. Testing.
Uh, can you talk into that one one more time for me, so I can pinpoint it?
Testing, 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 testing.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Wallace, the microphone is good. Doctor Hannah, it's fine, it is good. Doctor Collins, it is good.
Now I just need to figure out how these lights just in order.
This looks way hot, this looks like instead of here. You got a face parrot, tell me good. Ooh, scratchy, scratchy. Yeah, there you go. And it's still good. Mr. Wallace, how are you, sir? I'm great. As can be. That's great, sir. That one is wildly live, but sometimes it's just weird.
Yeah. Absolutely. That's what prepares.
That was good, that was all ready.
I don't know if I can see.
Well, take the, take the long way.
I, I told you that my glass-
Mark, so is this good, right now?
I guess so.
The microphone's off, yeah.
Yep, you're good, okay.
We might, um, we might remind the board members that the microphones will be on when people are in a-
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Alright.
Boo hoo, doors are open, team minus two.
Mark?
Yes.
I'm sorry, man. Uh, can we adjust the light level for you?
Uh, I've been trying, um, but-
Mark, I'll come right, I'll come up.
Okay, Doctor Singh, can I have a moment?
I'll come up. Uh, check that, those presets, Mark.
I checked all of them, and the one that uses the most lighting stage has light under the record.
Okay, um, Alice will be up in just a minute. I'm also wanting, she'll, oh no, it's better now. She'll be up there just a minute, she'll do her thing. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. Thanks, Mark. I wouldn't believe it. You know how previous this would have been about a week ago? You alright?
You alright? I'm great.
How is he prepared? Yeah, I mean, he's great up here, but did she get five minutes? No. I was, I was just like, I'm shocked. I knew after all this, it's gonna happen that way, definitely, you know? Sure. But I was just appalled that he had- They're like, are you kidding me? Yeah, so, um, yeah. So, uh, uh, if he touches on it, if he wants to put this, he can do put it on. I, I called him and asked him, called him, and I called him back.
Is that, is, that, he said that, is that because of the last work, that she asked, what was it, did you say?
So that he knows, that they say call it to live on, or just, it falls down.
Good, well done for you.
So I wanted that to head off in here for this stuff, I suppose this was a kind of-
Well, I know, so, uh, I, I was a little bit, that was not, reached Chinese as far as-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. That's good, isn't it? To see the eyes, I forget.
Like it's nice and loud, so we move this back.
Oh, okay.
So it should be...
So you don't have to be talking about...
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
Or don't talk about...
Yeah, probably so. That's probably a good call. You guys can just text back and forth.
Except that my phone's dead.
Uh-oh.
No, it's not like I need it attached to me. I just don't want it to die. Okay, I know that feeling.
The... Last page of the evening. There is a... The day stadium...
Yeah, I haven't read any of that yet.
The people on the track.
Oh, really?
You can't see because we're all... But I thought someone texted me there.
That's funny.
Yeah.
This is the first time in my lifetime I haven't got a road green. And I've missed a season, so it's kind of hard to stay away. Well, that's the eighties when I used to go. When I was a student, we could sit wherever we wanted. Yeah, my parents had seasons here. So my dad has had season tickets at the stadium. But they'd just buy ours at general admission. Take your floors with your sandwiches in. I'm sure there was concessions, but they just wanted to be there. I had fun. It wasn't fun as a whole, but I had fun. Yeah, you get used to that space.
Yeah. Well, that is... While you...
Yeah. Yeah. Well, next year. And how's Caitlin? She doing good?
Very good.
Good.
All right, I won't be able to...
Glad you said that.
Hi, buddy.
Hey.
How are you?
You sound like you're...
Me? Kiwa.
Yes. Hello.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
If I got it, if you want it.
What is it there?
Uh, 5:87. We're still short one. Oh, she did? Okay.
She's a good dancer, too. Do we all have a thing of motions?
Yeah.
Or do I have a thing of motions for a reason?
Um, I think everyone does.
Okay. This is what happens when you're on the way to a job and you have to step through the mud in the middle of a yard because the sidewalk is high.
That's it? That's all you... That's it?
That's all you got?
Hey, I'm lucky I didn't fall doing it. Or smell like sewer that was inside. How are you, Mark?
Very well.
Good.
You got something?
Good.
So it's good, Amber?
Better.
You had it, Steve?
Yep.
Could members of my entourage come up here?
Yeah.
I don't need...
This time was completely different symptoms. It's very interesting, yeah. The only thing that was similar was the fatigue and the extreme headache. Other than that... I have a slight cough, but it's more from my asthma than anything else. Yeah.
My taking that one?
Anybody that has breathing challenges...
But my mom had it, too. She got it. Nobody else in the rest of the family got it, which we all stayed. And I have commercial grade disinfectant those around my house. So that's helpful.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
I think our place smelled like...
Yeah, it was.
Disinfectant from the food store.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
But it smelled like...
And it's good stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, where is my...
Yeah, Jesse did a song.
That's right.
Our internet wasn't working because she was stressing.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm in my own suite over here. You can join me if you want. There's pretty bad pictures. Yeah, right, I'm drinking. I look imaginary all the time.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm sure you've got your glasses on.
Thank you for all the floor. Screens are not square. I miss school.
Like what app? That's what pisses mine because I don't know how to set it up. I know, I could, you know, go past technology. For saying... I'm not a good... For your email? It's hot. Sure I would.
You're in.
That's right. Yes, we do have one, and I have one. We do have one, and I have one. And then, um...
Were they handing the... The paravents and stuff out there?
They had them at the table. I'll make sure they're... They're gonna have some more things. Keith? Will you pick up the handouts that are on the table once we start?
Yeah.
And then pass them to the people who need them if they didn't want us to run one.
You bet.
And are we projecting up on this room? Okay. Okay. Is everyone ready? I'm gonna call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, if I could, a couple of points before we get started. I'd like to take a... Personal privilege here and thank a couple of special guests for me. And thank my husband and both of my boys for supporting me in here this evening and being kind enough to hang out with their mom this evening. So, thank you, boys, for coming. I know that they have a personal interest in one of the topics this evening. So, thank you, Carlin and Henry. I've also seen a lot of posts this evening or today and this week asking about why 5 o'clock on a Thursday for this particular board meeting. These meetings are typically five minutes long and are for the purpose of paying bills, making sure everyone gets paid, and keeping the lights on. Public comments on these type of meetings are typically not on the agenda. The Fledge of Allegiance is typically the longest part of these meetings. A couple of years ago, we made the switch on these meetings from being at 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to make it easier for those of us on the board who are parents because of getting our kids to school and getting us here for the meetings. There have only been a handful of times when we've had an action item beyond the payables at one of these type of meetings. There was a quick boundaries discussion after a committee meeting, and then we've also had a refinancing of the bond. But as we know, the pandemic has made us all have to pivot at times, and the board is no exception. This meeting was set and noticed up after our reorganization meeting in July. We could not change when the meeting was set at such short notice. The president sets the agenda in consultation with Dr. Carlin. Thankfully, Dr. Carlin and his leadership team were able to work quickly on the two charges that we gave to him at our last board meeting, and I was able to set an agenda for what should have been a very quick meeting into what you see here today. Two curriculum reports with proposed changes to our reopening plan and also public comment. This board and administration wants to do what is best for students and see them back in school and involved with the district as quickly and safely as possible. We are looking forward to hearing what will be said this evening. So now I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the following amendments. Additional certified classified personal actions for consideration. Item E-3.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Alex and second by Janine. Is there a discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Please, Mark.
You made a comment here about reopening the district. I think we've always been open. It's, I think you meant, perhaps, moving to a different level like we're contemplating. So, it's just a point of clarification. I hope we never go back, but we haven't been closed at all. And so, I don't know what you meant there, but it's just a point of clarification. We haven't been closed.
I'm sorry. I meant back, like, in-person school. Sorry.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to say that we were closed. Sorry. Any other discussion? Stephanie, if you'll take the role?
Lorna?
Aye.
Doctor Hannigan?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Janine? Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, we have a lot of different public comments. Sorry, let me get back to my timer. So like I did at the last meeting, I do have a 30-second time that I will put up. You are limited to five minutes. And then, at the conclusion of your five minutes, you'll see the red stop. So, Lisa Southern.
Hello. I'm Lisa Southern, and I work at Compass Behavioral Health, and just wanted to have a few comments about mental health side of COVID. I think there's a lot of emphasis on the physical health side, and we need to talk about the mental health side as well. I recently heard someone say that the number-one leadership quality needed during COVID is courage. And so, I'd like to thank all of the people here who had the courage to come and say what they want to say. I really want to thank the teenagers who asked me to come and talk because, to me, that took a lot of courage. There was a time not so long ago when kids did not want anything to do with mental health. And so, when they're recognizing that this is impacting their mental health and asking someone for mental health to come and talk, I think that deserves a lot of credit on their part. Compass relies a lot on the school district, and maybe that's fair or not fair. But you guys are the biggest referral source that we have of kids that are in crisis. We can see three to five kids a day, maybe even more, that are referred by the school district. And these kids and their emotional pain would go completely unrecognized if we didn't have your help. So we're very worried about our kids right now. And by kids, I mean the kids that live in our community because they don't have that resource to notice something's wrong and to get them over to Compass. I can talk to you about what the CDC says is going on with kids in mental health, but I'd rather have you hear what's happening in our community and the impact this is having on them. There is an increase in anxiety. There is an increase in depression. Loneliness, not being in school, not having other activities creates a loss of structure and a loss of control. Kids right now that are doing school from home, we're hearing a lot of them, they have no interest. Who would have thought kids would miss school? But really, they do. We have kids who are not bathing for days. They just get up, turn on the iPad or whatever. They don't even get dressed and put on new clothes every day because they've completely lost the motivation and the interest in participating in school. Parents and kids are really struggling. These kids don't have a break from being at home, from their siblings or from their parents. We have a crisis house here in Garden City for kids who are having emotional problems. And we had a kid there this last week who assaulted their parent, who was just trying to help them do their schoolwork because that's how high the stress levels are. Suicidal thoughts is another thing that I didn't even touch on with what's happening with our kids. I don't even know how many people are aware that there are suicidal kids in our community, but there are, and that is on the rise. Most days in the state of Kansas, there are no psychiatric beds open for adults or kids because they're all full, because of the toll this is taking on people. Again, we have a crisis house. Our crisis house is full almost every day. There are people, adults and kids, sitting at St. Catherine Hospital Emergency Room or on the medical floor for two or three days waiting for a bed to open because they have to be somewhere safe until we can get them the psychiatric care that they need. Loneliness and hopelessness are the two biggest factors that lead to people being suicidal, and that is what we're seeing with adults and kids in our community. I totally appreciate the email that went out earlier today. It changed, you know, my plea today because now I know that in January, our kids are gonna be back in school. My ask is that, moving forward, mental health is considered as part of the decision-making related to COVID. Because again, COVID is not just about people's physical health and dying from COVID physically. It's also about people's mental health and honestly, the potential that they could die from COVID due to mental health issues. And then my last thing, I don't know if I'm running out of time or not, is if we need substitutes, how do we find substitute teachers to come in and help? I'm even willing to look at what I could do to flex my work schedule to sign up to be a substitute teacher if that's one of the things that is needed because that's important. That's how important it is to me that kids can stay in school. And that's all.
Okay, I normally don't comment, but that gentleman down here is the person you need to talk to about substitute teaching. Zach Warren? Heath Hogan?
Hi, my name is Zach Warren. I'm a senior here at the high school, and I'm in the National Honor Society, and I'm part of the golf team. And today, my speech has changed from what it originally was. Tonight, I really just want to thank you for the Level Four, but with the Level Four changing just so suddenly before tonight's meeting, I'm a little suspicious about it. And I know I've asked a few other people in here that are not speaking tonight to prepare a speech tonight, but they are not due to the change in Level Four. And with the vaccine coming out only here in merely weeks, I just asked you that we stay in Level Four for the rest of the year and stay in school, and thank you for the Level Four.
Alexander Olinger?
Distinguished board members, I'm a concerned community member. I do not feel that the decision to go to Level Four is a safe choice. The positivity rate of 65% is alarming and evidence of significant community spread. Many districts have closed in-person learning for much lower positivity than we even started with this year. Level Four would allow for full classrooms, and there are not many classrooms in our schools that can appropriately social distance. To allow for social distancing, a class size at the high school can only have 13 to 15. can only have 13 to 15 students. I have classes larger than that. I also attended many sporting events at Level 4, and I noticed how our community ignored and our administration refused to enforce the guidelines set at that level. As I have pointed out to some of you before when you attended the games, even though masks were said to be a requirement, no one enforced this requirement. Lunches at the high school have not been able to socially distance, and students do not wear masks at this time. For the first time this year, after we went to Level 6, I felt safe, because I did not have to worry about hundreds of possible exposures every day. The constant possibility of being infected with this virus is stressful and burdensome. I understand that this is hard. It's hard for me, too. But our schools are not an island away from our community. I would not stand in a line closer than six feet from anyone at the store. So why are we requiring our students to do this every day, seven hours in the classroom? We have an alarming amount of deaths and hospitalizations in our community. The thought that one of my coworkers or students would join these alarming statistics weighs on me. The thought that one of, oh, sorry. While pressure to open up our schools may be mounting, we need to first realize that we are in a pandemic. According to a peer-reviewed study published in Science Magazine on December 15th, 2020, closing schools in universities reduces new COVID transmissions by 38%. This is hard, yes, but staying at Level 6 and putting sports aside until our numbers are lower is what will keep our community safe. What are we teaching our students by giving in just because something is hard? Let's teach our students that they need to sacrifice to keep others safe. Sacrifices are all something we have to make in this pandemic. I remind you that our positivity rate is 65%, and we are told that 15% is the level at which schools should close. I would love to be with my students, but we need to think about the facts that we are having on our community. Thank you for your time.
Jeanette Turpin.
Hello, everyone. I'm too short for this microphone, so I'll just talk loud.
You can adjust it.
That's okay. I'm too shaky to adjust it. It's fine. Thank you. I'll try to talk loud so that people can hear me better watching on Zoom. So I'm a teacher. It's what I do. I've sacrificed time with my families. I've been away for weekends. I'm also a sponsor. I want nothing more except one thing than to be with my students, and that one thing is to keep our community safe first. If our community isn't safe, you cannot be mentally healthy without feeling physically safe and without being physically safe. If our families are not okay, then kids can't be okay. Right? You guys know this. You have to put the oxygen mask on yourself before you can put it on the children. We have to take care of our community as a whole before we can get education back to optimal, which is what we're talking about. We can still be good enough, and I know, I know, it's not good. It's not what we want. None of us want it. It's hard as parents. My kids are at home Zooming all day. It's difficult. It's hard as a teacher. I am conversational. I am hands-on. That is the best way to teach. I studied teaching. That is the best way to teach. But it is only the best way to teach if people can be safe. This is Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Basic things. Physiological needs first, safety and security next, and that does include mental health, absolutely. But mental health is also affected by a massive pandemic and high rates in the community. We cannot ignore that that is also impacting mental health, and we are so close, you guys. There's a vaccine. People are taking it. Teachers now are in one of the waves to get them. Finally, in late February, we will be able to get them. Can we just wait the rest, just a few more months? Can we just wait a few more months? Keep our community safe until we have vaccines? Please, keep our community safe. Suffer a little bit longer. We're suffering together. We can do it. We can make it better. It has been better. It's been better. It's going down in our community. We closed the schools because we thought it was problematic, and it's better. Let's keep it up just a little bit longer, just until those vaccines are in for the most vulnerable people, for our elderly, for our vulnerable. Please, just a little longer. I cannot tell you how much I want to be with my kids. I cannot tell you how much my kids need to be with their teachers.
Shelley Smith.
Hi. Can you hear me? I emailed all of you this afternoon asking you to speak loudly and clearly. I don't know if you can move your mics up, if it will cause problems, but still not hearing you well. So that was me. It was very frustrating last week to not be able to hear you. This is my granddaughter, Rea. She wanted to come with me, and if she feels comfortable, she may speak and say something. I read Dr. Carlin's letter today regarding back-to-school Level 4 in January, and of course, we're very thankful for that. However, I'm still here to ask the board and Dr. Carlin to revisit the gating criteria found on the school's website that determines operational levels in our schools. There are six criteria, but only one, which is 17% of them are exclusive to our school. The other five are all community-related indicators, which I agree with this lady just spoke, is important, but I don't believe it's the job of USD 457 or Tyson or Walmart to police community health. And that's where I'm coming from on these criteria. So based on, so based on this criteria, these six gating criteria, my granddaughter is responsible for every community member in this town. She's responsible for the hospitalizations. We're blessed to have a hospital that can handle the illnesses. And I know this is a real thing. I've had COVID. Still can't taste since Election Day. But it's, no matter how long she and her classmates and her teachers wear a mask, she can't control the other five criteria that go on in the community. And again, I hear you guys, and I hear your care and concern, and we are, we're all there, you know? But it's not our student and our staff's responsibility. Honestly, with all respect, I don't think it's your responsibility or Dr. Carlin's to police the community health. And without sounding mean, I would like to say it's been on the CDC's information since the beginning. You know, our general health, obesity and severe obesity, we're not going up to the grocery carts in Walmart and Dylan's and plucking unhealthy food out and asking people, "Get healthy, get healthy." We won't discuss what goes in our mouths, but we're willing to cover them under the guise of masking is showing that we're caring. So please, take your own health seriously. Stay away from people, you know, if you don't have a mask on. And don't make my granddaughter and all the other kids pay for the decisions of the community. Do you want to say anything? Okay. Ready, jump. Here. Okay.
Everyone at the school is not paying attention when we're doing all this Zoom. And no one's mostly paying attention when mostly everyone's playing with their stuff.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Elise Salzer.
Okay, can you hear me okay? All right. Hello, my name's Elise Salzer. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm also an addictions counselor. My role in our community is to provide mental health support for all ages. I recently transferred into private practice, but before that, I was working at the Community Mental Health Center with Lisa Southern. So I just want to kind of piggyback off of some of the things that she mentioned. I want to start off-
Elise, I'm sorry. Can you scooch up just a little bit closer to the mic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll lower it, too. Sorry. I want to start off by stating how thankful I am that Dr. Carlin reviewed data as well as what was in the best interest of USD 45 students today with the Finney County Health Department. I also am very thankful for how hard our teachers have been working to provide quality remote learning. That being said, I do want to raise further awareness of our students' current mental health crisis. I realize we are returning January 5th for in-person learning, but I'm also aware this opportunity can be taken away quickly. As you know, our kiddos need normalcy. They need structure, engagement, routine, and support that they cannot get virtually. A computer and an iPad do not replace healthy interactions with people. We know the pandemic has forced people out of their comfort zones and impacted their emotional and mental health. And while adults may be better equipped to handle the disruption, our children in the community continue to be greatly impacted. According to the CDC, children's mental health during public health emergencies can have both short and long-term consequences to their overall health and well-being. No parent wants to imagine that their child would think about ending their life or hurting themselves in any way. But the reality is that kids and teens are not immune to severe symptoms of depression like suicidal thoughts. Unfortunately, we have seen a negative impact of everything that comes with the COVID-19 pandemic on child and teen mental health, including increased suicidal thoughts. According to a recent nationwide study on teacher and student wellness during the COVID-19 pandemic, 46% of teachers reported encountering student mental health concerns such as anxiety, depression, academic stress, trauma, and grief more often than they did before the pandemic. As a professional in the field, I witnessed a dramatic increase in this firsthand. During my time at Compass Behavioral Health, I had a weekly intake day, which is when new referrals come in for support. You would not believe how many students came in of all ages with parents connecting their mental health symptoms to remote learning. I was seeing an increase in depression, anxiety, stress, family conflict, feelings of isolation, suicidal ideation, and even self-harming behaviors. Some of these students had pre-existing mental health conditions, but many of them did not. For example, a first grader crying, begging to her mom to return to school daily, developing symptoms of anxiety and depression at the young age of six. Symptoms including chewing and eating large chunks of her hair and grinding her teeth to the point of developing headaches. This is just one example of a parent seeking support for their child, but we also know so many of our students are unable to receive the necessary mental health interventions. This can be tied to parents working while students are at home learning independently, as parents must support their family financially. It can also be because families are overwhelmed, and they do not know how to support their children during the pandemic, let alone through remote learning. In visiting with the Assistant County Attorney yesterday, she reported a dramatic increase in truancy, as students are not able to log on and complete their work or they have no support or encouragement to do so. Our students are practicing washing their hands, keeping a safe distance, and wearing a mask all day. They know what's necessary. Our students deserve a great education. They deserve the opportunity to be healthy, happy, and successful. This virus is awful, but it's not going anywhere. Our students have been doing their part to keep people safe all school year by following precautions at school and even in their community. They deserve the best. So with the encouraging news received this afternoon, I just plead with USD 457 to continue exploring creative solutions regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and how it impacts staffing issues. I encourage USD 457 to continue exploring ways to keep students and staff healthy while keeping our students in school for the education they deserve and also the support they need for their individual mental health. Thank you.
Angie Talbert.
Good evening, board members. First of all, I was forced to change my speech at about 3:45 today, much like everybody else here, upon receiving the notification that the district is moving to Level 4. Dr. Carlin, thank you for that. Every day in class learning is no doubt the best situation for students, and I hope that clubs and activities will be able to resume. They are, like I said before, completely voluntary, and if parents are uncomfortable with their kids participating, they don't have to. We're excited to have so many enrichment opportunities for our five kids in your schools. Robotics, debate, sports, they all teach valuable life lessons and are valuable parts of school. They're not just about a game or a competition. They're about perseverance, commitment, dedication, not giving up, teamwork, respect for authority, following instructions, accountability, good sportsmanship. The list could go on and on. Thank you for listening to the community's concerns and taking steps to engage our kids. Please remember that you were voted in by the community to represent us and to be our voice. The health director and other people in healthcare here are not voted in to do that. Your job, your number one job as the Board of Education, and I've said this before, is our kids' education, and that's it. Your job is not to manage my family's health practices. There are others keeping busy with that in our community. And my kids, they have a constitutional right to be in the public school buildings without being discriminated against for not wearing a face covering. My kids are worth approximately $75,525 to this district. They should be able to use the classrooms just like anybody else. Based on my research of masks, I cannot and will not, in good conscience, allow my children to sit in a classroom for eight hours a day wearing a mask. The health risks associated with mask-wearing are far too great for me to even consider it. For example, bacterial pneumonia is on the rise. Please, please, consider providing a mask waiver and/or a liability waiver for families with these same concerns. We shouldn't have to decide between our children's education and our health. There is much debate surrounding the debate of mask-wearing, and you can find a wealth of information supporting both sides. Supposedly, we wear masks because we are asymptomatic for the last nine months. No science proves masks keep you from getting sick, but there is starting to be concerns over mask-wearers being more prone to getting sick. Feel free to look at my Facebook page for a very informative video by Brad Huff on mask concerns that I shared on December 11th. I want my kids in class. They might like their comfy cozy schedule at home, but they need their teachers and their classmates. Survival rates for COVID are over 99%. There are too many contradictions and illogics surrounding COVID protocols. Schools should not be in the most restricted buildings in our community, and that's exactly what they are. Thank you.
Trina Mopet. Trina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Carlin, thank you for Level 4. Coming into today, I had this speech ready, and after I heard Level 4, my thought was to not speak, but I think we need to stay below Level 6 as a district, so I figured I would just talk anyway. My name's Trina, and I'm a proud teacher and softball coach for the USD 457. I do understand the importance of athletics to high school and activities to high school students and the positive, and I repeat, positive impact that can have on students. Coming from someone who was motivated by sports to do the best I could in the classroom, given throughout my younger years, school didn't come easy to me, who without sports being a huge driving force in my life would probably not have an advanced college education now. As a coach, I already lost a season due to COVID, and I understand the advocacy for not taking away any more from these kids. But that is not the reason I stand up here speaking tonight. I am first and foremost a mother who understands the importance of education and the impact of these school shutdowns are having on our youth. The longer this goes on, the longer the pendulum swings to where this could be a generation that's really left behind. All we hear is numbers are going up in the community, but there is no data on the relative contribution of school closure to transmission control. We do know, what we do know is the achievement gap is widening as our public school kids are falling further behind every single day, my 12-year-old son included. In addition to learning loss, COVID-19 closures will most likely- In addition to learning loss, COVID-19 closures will most likely increase high school dropout rates. Currently, 6.55 for Hispanic, 5.5 for Black, and 3.9 for white students respectively. The shutdowns are disrupting many of the supports that can help vulnerable kids stay in school, academic engagement and achievement, and strong relationships with caring adults. From my students, I hear how hard it is to get motivated and that they are missing the work ethic part in school, that in-school, in-person school provides. Grades are dropping considerably due to remote learning alone. Data from the Lancet Child and Adolescent Health suggests the school closures during the SARS outbreak 10 years ago in mainland China, Hong Kong, and Singapore did not contribute to the control of the epidemic. Modeling studies of COVID-19 predict that school closure alone would only prevent 2% to 4% of deaths, much less than other social distancing interventions. Our schools are the only thing shut down right now in our community, and we are not the problem, nor are we the solution to lowering the community numbers. We need to take the appropriate measures and get back to school buildings. Shut down schools on individual basis for a short time to help with staffing issues due to COVID, but we cannot have the district fully shut down for the sake of all our children and our futures in this wonderful community we are blessed to live in. Thank you.
Jenna Shuck.
I think I was like everybody else earlier today until we got the notification at about 4 o'clock this evening that we are going to go back to Level 4, so thank you for that. I guess my biggest thing is, is that I want to address, I have three kids that are in school, I have two in elementary school and I have one in middle school. My two elementary school kids, not too bad, the teachers have been great. My middle school, huge athlete, but has nothing to drive for anymore. His grades are not good. He has a two-minute Zoom every single morning to check in so that he's not absent, and after that, it's free for all. Like, log on, watch a video, try to figure it out yourself. I mean, we've gone to Google, we've gone to Socratic Math App, which I'm sure you all know how that works. It's not working. These kids need the in-classrooms, they need guidance, they need structure, and they do need sports. I'm not going to sit here and advocate for sports as the only thing, but why, we're so focused on masks and we're so focused on social distancing and keeping everybody healthy, but what about the mental state, the health, the exercise, the good foods, everything for these children? I mean, we're getting bagged lunches that are in plastic sacks now, that's not healthy. And, I mean, Uncrustables, of course, kids love them, but they're not healthy. But what I'm saying is, is that we have to focus on, if people don't want to get themselves healthy, we can't punish our children because other people in this area just wants us to social distance or wear a mask instead of going out and exercising, eating healthy, taking our vitamins, doing what we're supposed to be doing to get these kids back into school. It's not anybody's responsibility besides your own. Our household has been hit with it, zero problems with it, but all my kids are very athletic, very, I mean, we exercise every single day, we eat healthy, we take our vitamins, we take care of ourselves. My other thing is too, is that I know everybody wants to talk about the hospitals are full, full, full. One of our CrossFit coaches is a nurse at the hospital who was sent home because there wasn't anything for him to do that day. So I'm going to go ahead and say that that's not everything that is going on. He has been sent home a couple times because there's not enough things for him to work on. So if we are sitting here and saying that our hospitals are full and there's no beds, no nothing, then why are we sending nurses home at night? Yes, I do agree. I guess my other thing is, is that let's stick to Level 4. I know we had a meeting at the beginning of the year that if one school gets hit, then we do shut down that school, completely understandable. Horace Good was not short, teachers. Horace Good was not short anything, but yet when Playmell was, we did shut down for two weeks, perfectly fine, I completely understand it. But Carlin did mention at the very beginning of all of this, we are not planning on shutting anything down. We are planning on shutting down schools if we have to, if they go short-staffed, I understand, but I don't think everybody needs to suffer and shut down the whole district if one school is bad. So I guess my thing is, is that we need to start focusing on mental health, physical health, vitamins, nutrition, everything for these kids instead of wearing a mask, social distancing. My biggest thing right now is, is please, let's stay at Level 4 or even farther down.
Hani Koash.
I just, I just want to start out with a little bit of a shout-out to my husband. I don't know if anybody else has been distracted by my rowdy bunch tonight, but can you imagine somebody who is not trained in educating, who is trying to undertake, single-handedly, the, all the schoolwork of four children that are on completely different grade levels? So I just want to shout out to him, and he is one of the reasons why we stand up here today, because he is one of the fathers that has opportunity and sees as that in every chance that he gets. So, thank you, Chris. I want to begin my comment tonight by reiterating, I'm sorry, I can't. By reiterating the respect with which my message is intended. I am in no way an expert on anything, nor do I believe that I could do your job in any better way than you have been, except for with regard to transparency and a call to community collaboration in seeking solutions. That being said, perhaps my inquiries and concerns were not adequately or clearly articulated. Maybe I wasn't clear enough in my emails. I respect you, and thank you, Dr. Carlin. We were very, very happy to hear of that news this afternoon, and it did also change my message today slightly. I respect you, and I respect the people with which you're consulting in order to formulate all the information you need to keep our community safe and make these decisions, but I want to help. And I know that from talking to people in my community and people that I don't even know, that have reached out in the last 48 hours, that have asked questions and not gotten answers, and they're questions such as these. For clarity's sake, let me ask again, how can I, as a citizen and a stakeholder, step in and help? How can I come up with or even apply, even if just on paper, different ideas, strategies, contingencies that either the state has issued in guidance or perhaps are new and unique to our own community? What will not work for specific means for our community, and what ideas are we entertaining that may be very different than what traditional school even looks like? Clearly, I expect for those ideas to be entertained only after vetting factors that are non-negotiable, such as the safety of everyone involved. How can I, on a volunteer basis, help on a committee that should still be meeting with new ideas? Sorry, we're a hot mess. With, excuse me. I'm so sorry. Thank you. How can I, on a volunteer basis, help on a committee that should still be meeting with new ideas to examine, especially when nobody has all the answers yet? Is there a place to sign up? And if so, when do you draw names again? Is it similar to a raffle in which, in exchange for some form of currency, I can increase my chances of winning the opportunity to volunteer my time? I don't know, because you have yet to answer these questions about who is chosen for what kinds of ideas that have been entertained or vetoed, or what they even are. I appreciate the concept of a living document, but I don't condone any process used in its construction or revisions that is done behind closed doors with little to no call for community and participation or collaboration. After all, if you look at the definition and implications of the word stakeholder, then you would know that what is decided and done within the district has a direct effect on us as parents, teachers, and especially students. Every decision you make with regard to what happens in this district has an enormous impact on us as stakeholders, and the impact it has on the stakeholders will then in turn directly affect things such as budgeting, available grants, and so on. It is because of these factors that the information guiding your decisions should be entirely public. This is not limited to the data from Vinnie County Health Department, which is understandably restricted with regard to privacy and HIPAA, but it must include how the contingency plan or the contingency plans. Ms. Koash, thank you. I just want to thank you all very much for your time, but I do, I do implore you to ask us, send out a survey, include us in these collaborative meetings, and let us know what we're working on. Maybe we might have some ideas, some fresh thoughts. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your service. Thank you, Dr. Carlin.
Aaron Elam.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Elam. I have a son who's a sophomore here at the high school, and then my daughter Abby is a seventh grader, Horace Good. First, I'd like to thank the young lady from Compass for speaking, and whatever teenagers were involved with getting her here, I commend you, young people, for doing that. That's great, and for me, that's coming from a father who had a daughter that suffered with this when we went in, in the spring. My daughter had to go to Compass, and they did a tremendous job. So, thank you for speaking, and also the fact about not showering for seven days, because that is truth. I want to talk a little bit about some statements that were made at the last board meeting that I kind of felt uneasy about. Dr. Hannigan, you made the statement at the last board meeting stating that athletics were not a positive in your life. You stated that it still bothers you today, and then you went on and you said that, as parents, if we are expecting to buy our kids stuff, hire coaches, and then drop them off and expect the school to make something of them, and then you use the term "really"? To this, I say really. Right before, excuse me, yep, right before we entered into Level 6, there was an application that came out here in the high school for a HOBE Leadership Conference. My son brought that application home, we read it, and to be even mentioned or thought of for this conference, he was asked to write an essay about leaders in his life, their leadership styles, what they do, and what he would like to take from them to make him a better leader when he was an adult. He took this essay, he wrote it, and when I read it, it was about two people. It was about Coach Brian Hill, and it was about our band director, Lyle Soba. He talked about how Coach Hill could motivate him to do whatever it was. It didn't matter what it was. If they were down 20, he felt like he had a chance when he stepped out on that field. He talked about Lyle Soba and how Lyle Soba motivates him to be the best saxophone player he can be in a quieter way than Coach Hill. But yet, when he, as he grows, that's what he wants to do, be able to motivate like Coach Hill and have the ability to do it in a quieter fashion like Lyle Soba. So sir, Austin won that, or was selected to be our sophomore candidate to the HOBE Leadership Conference because of that essay. So to your comment, when you said, "Do you expect us to drop our kids off and our teachers or our coaches make better people out of them?", yeah, I do. Coach Hill, thank you. Dr. Hannigan, if you feel this is not happening here at this high school, sir, you have not met Coach Hill, you have not spent any time around our athletic program, you have not witnessed J.C. Holloway in a huddle with his athletes, you haven't met Coach Wright, you haven't seen Coach Lindberg on the field with him in practice, you haven't met Coach Bailey or his wife, Coach Trista Bailey, who has my son in class. And I'll tell you what, I'm really excited, because I've got a 13-year-old daughter. And when she plays softball, young lady, I know you, or I know that she is going to gain that enthusiasm and fire that you had when you spoke up here, and I hope she gains the guts to be a strong woman and stand up in front of a board of her peers and speak. Thank you, I cannot wait till my 13-year-old place for you. We have a tremendous staff in this school. You guys have done a wonderful job. Dr. Carlin, you have done a tremendous job, because I would put this staff up in front of anybody in the state. My wife and I moved here in 2017. We moved from a Class B school in Oklahoma. The reason we moved here, we knew that there was better opportunity in a 6A school, honors programs, drama, athletics, choir, things like that. That's why we moved here, and we have not been disappointed up until now, when our kids have not been able to play. If we'd have stayed where we were at in Oklahoma, my son would be playing for a state championship on Friday night. Has he complained one time about that? No.
Thank you, Mr. Elam.
Thank you.
Amanda Strahan.
Good evening, guys. Unlike most of the parents, I didn't learn about...
I'm sorry, Ms. Strahan, can you just step a little bit?
Yep. I didn't learn about the going back to Level 4 until tonight, when I got here. I am a mom of six kids. Five of those are in the school district, ranging from pre-K up to a sophomore in high school. I am also a mom and a business owner with my husband. I am currently a month behind on paperwork, because I have five kids that I have to make sure are in Zoom meetings and getting their work done. My sophomore, I'm going to second a letter or a sign-off for the masks. My sophomore has come home several times and told me that he has multiple classes where he can take a mask break, and it doesn't matter how many kids are in that circle for the mask break. How can we enforce a mask? They're all together. I have my kindergartner that tells me and pleads with me about not having to wear a mask to school because he can't breathe, how I have to force him to put a mask on before he gets on a bus to school. I have a fifth grader, who's a straight-A student, that currently has Ds and Fs, because he doesn't care, he's at home. He's not getting the interaction he needs with his teachers. I've talked to teachers about getting his grades back up, how he can get those back up. They lock all his assignments within a week. If I don't stay on top of him, he has no way of making those assignments up or earning any type of extra credit. My sophomore in high school, he has to get on one time on Monday morning to check in with multiple teachers, and then they just expect him to get his work done. So please explain to me how it's fair for all of our students, not just my kids, but my students, to be able to learn and get the learning that they need. My preschool student is on Zoom for 30 minutes a day. They read a book, they go over some little... They read a book, they go over some little games or whatever they do while I'm sitting there, and they're off. He's not learning anything. What am I paying for? I'm paying for my kids to be able to come to school and get the education they need. My kids are falling behind, and it's not any fault of theirs. I do my best. My husband's gone all week long. I sit at home, I try to teach my kids, hence I'm a month behind on my paperwork that has to be done by the end of December. And that's fine. I can stay up late, I can get up early, and I've been doing it. But it's not fair to our kids to have to sit in remote learning and try to figure stuff out on themselves. The new math? My poor second grader, he's learnt the old math, because this mom, I don't know, that's not even cool. I'm not going to sit there and try to learn something new to teach him. And when he gets told he has to do it that way, I tell the teacher, "Then I don't know what to tell you, because this is what I know and it's what he's being taught." If it's my job right now to teach him, then I can. And I think my elementary kids' teachers, because they do, they go above and beyond, and those two kids are on Zoom from 8:30 in the morning till about 3 o'clock every afternoon with 15-minute breaks in between classes. They do an amazing job. And my fifth grader is, he's sitting there doing the exact same thing. Most of the time, he doesn't want to pay attention, because he's at home, sitting at a table, because he's been caught on YouTube several times while it's supposed to be in class. So now he gets the pleasure of sitting at a table with his other brothers, learning. It's just, I thank you guys for putting us back in Level 4. I really do, because that's what the kids need. I've seen my kids be happy kids and love coming to school to being depressed. But they need that. I was in band growing up. I've known, my biggest inspiration were my band teachers. I'm still in contact with them today. And I, the kids need scores. They do. The band, choir, JROTC, my oldest son is in JROTC, and he misses that. I thank you guys for your time tonight, and I hope that you guys can continue listening to the community. Thank you.
Stephanie, do we have any correspondence?
No.
Thank you.
Dr. Carlin, did we need to do anything with regard to that?
Yeah, if you'd like, I have a letter that's come in.
Yeah, thank you.
Later tonight, the board is going to hear a presentation, two presentations, about changes to our plan. One area from our Elementary Instruction Committee and one from our Activities Athletics Group. And yesterday, our Select Vision Team listened to the proposals, and that'll be shared with you at the next part in this meeting. One of the members of that team was not able to be here tonight, but specifically asked to send a letter for the board, so I would like to read that to you. And this letter is from Colleen Dries. She's the Health Officer and Director of the Fannie County Health Department. USD 457 School Board Members, I am writing you all to express the Fannie County Health Department's support for revisions as presented to you this evening. The collaborative approach from USD 457's administration has served the relationship between the Health Department and USD 457, and has tremendously influenced the success of operations for both organizations, thus serving our community to a greater capacity. I had the opportunity to be a part of the discussion and voting decisions of the Select Vision Team and the presentations and revisions as discussed in this meeting as well. We much appreciate the collaborative approach and look forward to the continued success of both organizations. We are supportive of the following revisions as presented this evening. School playgrounds in Level 5 to allow playgrounds to be open using a classroom rotation schedule. Purposeful play in Levels 4 and 5 to allow partner play and groups to stay at the same stations all week. Grade 7 through 12 District Activities Athletics follow the district's level baseline for activities, competition, and practices. District Plan Level 4 to allow a maximum of two spectators per participant, not to exceed 35% of the total capacity of the venue for all indoor events, to allow band. District Plan Level 5 to allow middle school competitions and events to allow reduced to 35% participants. And District Plan Level 6 to allow athletics and activities to practice in groups no larger than 16. As always, if there are any questions or concerns, do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your time and consideration and for thoughtfully considering the health of our community with these extremely difficult decisions. Colleen Dries.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Alex to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? Stephanie, if you'll call the roll.
Laura.
Aye.
Dr. Daniel.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Dr. Carlin, I know you just read the letter from Ms. Dries, but do we have anything? Did you want to start us with the COVID update as well, or do we want to just start with Ms. LaBarbara?
We'll let Mrs. LaBarbara come up, and I do have something I want to share before she begins.
Okay, please.
Earlier today, the decision to remove, excuse me, earlier today, the decision to resume school on January 5th, 2021, at Operational Level 4 was announced. This decision was made through the same process that has been used since school began in August. It would be nice if this decision could be made from a single piece of information. Unfortunately, it is a much more complex issue than that. This decision is made in consultation with the Fannie County Health Department, my leadership team, and our District Health Services Coordinator at a weekly meeting now being held on Thursday afternoons. When an individual school is adjusted to an elevated level, the school administration is also part of that decision-making process. It is important to remember that our goal has been to have students in school face-to-face as normally as possible while taking reasonable steps to keep our students and staff safe. The district conducted 10 weeks of fully onsite, face-to-face learning to start the school year, followed by two weeks of hybrid learning. This is considerably better than most 6A Kansas schools, many of which have not had a single week of fully onsite, face-to-face learning this entire year. When the decision was made on November 21st to move the district to Operational Level 6, the district had five schools that were already doing Level 6 remote learning due to shortages of staff caused by high numbers of quarantined and COVID-positive staff members. District-wide, the number of COVID-related USD 457 staff absences for the three weeks, the prior three weeks, averaged 105 per day, the highest three weeks of staff absences since school began. The number of new positive cases in the community was on an increasing trend and had reached 428 in a week, a three-time increase from the number in early October. This data is all posted publicly on the district website at the end of each week. Additionally, the Fannie County Health Department provides information about the COVID-related impact on our local hospital. The district does not use the gating criteria provided by the Kansas State Department of Education. Instead, we use a similar tool developed in conjunction with the Fannie County Health Department and all three school groups in Fannie County to help inform these difficult decisions. This document is also available on the district website. Today, the data has shown considerable improvement since November 21st. New COVID-positive staff members have decreased from an average of 36.5 per week for the first two weeks of November to an average of eight for the last two weeks, not counting tomorrow. USD 457 daily staff absences for COVID-related reasons have decreased to a three-week average in the low 40s. The number of students testing positive has also decreased significantly since late November, but it is likely this data is incomplete since students have not been attending school in person. New positive cases in the community have decreased from a two-week total of 813 from November 1st to November 14th to a two-week total of 414 from November 22nd to December 5th. The information provided us today shows that the weekly number of new positive cases in Fannie County for last week was 175. The information provided also shows some improvement in the number of COVID-related cases at St. Catherine's Hospital, but they are still operating at or near capacity. Although there are still reasons to be concerned with the current situation in our community, the situation has shown improvement, and the decision was made to return to baseline Operational Level 4 in order to get students back to school for onsite learning, consistent with the goal to have students in school face-to-face as normally as possible while taking reasonable steps to keep our students and staff safe. Individual schools may be elevated to a higher level based on staffing needs and COVID-19 activity. To reiterate, there is no question that the best place for most of our students is onsite in face-to-face learning. However, we need help from our community. We need people to take the steps like wearing a mask, washing their hands, watching their distance, and limiting gathering sizes to help reduce the spread of COVID-19 in our community. We all want to have students onsite in school doing face-to-face learning, but that must be balanced with the reasonable steps to keep students and staff safe. Please help, so that it doesn't become necessary for the entire district to return to baseline Operational Level 6 in the future.
All right, we're going to go ahead, and I want to talk a little bit about some headlines that came out in the last week or so. The headlines from the State Department that said all elementary schools should be onsite and kids should be in the schools learning. Those were the headlines, and many people read the headlines and said, "Let's get back to, let's get back to school," which is, again, what we all want to do. But what we didn't all read about was maybe the fine print that came with that KSDE recommendation. So I want to walk you through some of that proposal, so that you kind of understand where KSDE is coming from. I was able to attend a lunch and learn, is what it was called, kind of an in-service, if you will, a Zoom for educators, and we got to hear the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids that is made up of doctors, Health Department, patrons, school board members, and they look at the data and make recommendations to KSDE and just in general to hospitals and based on the data. The first slide here is a national perspective. And again, I'm glad I made some notes, because I can't see what's over there, but it does say that children have milder symptoms. That is one of the things that they've noticed. There have been 154 children deaths nationwide. Students that have, or children that have more severe medical conditions are more susceptible to severe COVID symptoms. And the last bullet on there does say that Black and Hispanic children in population have higher COVID numbers than other populations, which I think in our community is noteworthy. The next slide is a Kansas perspective, and these were taken directly from their presentation. The 0-9 age group has a 3% positivity for COVID. 10-17 is 7%. The 0-17 age group has had zero deaths in Kansas, and the 18-24 age group has had five deaths.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Glenda, but I was at a meeting today, and I understand that that information may actually be being updated. Mr. Meckle said that that information is being reanalyzed with regard to children's deaths, with regard to COVID, so that a new study is actually coming out.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's --
Yeah, this was last Wednesday, I want to say, is when this was given out. And this is just the Kansas numbers on this slide. So the first slide had the national numbers.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you, because he mentioned that there was one that came out like yesterday, maybe.
Okay.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine.
He mentioned it this morning to me at 7:00, and I've been in trial all day, so I wasn't able to get that study from him, so.
We'll certainly take a look at that.
I just wanted to mention that, because I know that that's been an area of contention.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. Thank you. This is one of my favorite slides that the work group presented. They liken the strategies for preventing COVID as Swiss cheese. No one strategy in and of themselves are going to prevent someone from getting COVID, and perhaps all of them are not going to completely prevent COVID from spreading, but it's sure going to help. So as you put the layers of Swiss cheese together, the holes start covering up. So as you notice, they have the hand washing, the social distancing, the masks, all of the different strategies, along with sanitizing, and they put all the different layers together, and that helps us to prevent the spread. So one of the things that they said is, "This is not one strategy, it's at least five, and we need to use them all and all together in order to make a difference." So then the next part of this is what KSDE sent out based on that COVID Work Group recommendation. They made changes to the elementary gating criteria, and they are saying that even if a district is in, for example, our Level 6, that steps should be taken for the elementary schools to stay onsite in some capacity. This can be hybrid, or this can be full, but they also gave criteria. If you look at that last line, it says, "As long as the districts meet the following criteria." So that's what we're going to talk about next.
Can I go down there?
No, just, it's too far away.
Does this help?
Yes.
Better? All right, you're welcome. All right, are we on the next slide with the criteria? Thank you. Middle and high school should continue to follow the current gating criteria. So they felt like the older students were more apt to spread than the little kids, and their symptoms could be worse. So they did not change the gating criteria for the secondary schools, middle and up, but they did go ahead and ask for changes to the elementary. In this, oh, yeah, I'll take it back just once. Thank you. One of the things that is noteworthy here is they do say that even at the secondary levels, if there is an at-risk population, students on 504s or with IEPs, that they could potentially bring those in in small groups and do tutoring with them to keep them from losing skills. So the changes to the elementary gating criteria, mask is required. That's the first one that's listed up there. And then the second one says, "Six-foot distance or hybrid or cohort groups of five with tables separated by six foot." So that is one of them that was very important to us. They said that the students must be able to be maintained six foot apart or cohort groups. So if we have a classroom of 20, we can put five at a table, but those tables have to be six foot apart, and that can be very difficult in some of our classrooms. be six foot apart, and that can be very difficult in some of our classrooms. There's also, I think that's the ventilation system is the next one, and we're going to have another slide that is specifically on the ventilation that KJ's going to talk about. So I'll let her go ahead and talk about that because that's one of the things that they want all the buildings to meet as well. So as Glenda mentioned, the ventilation was a, was a recommendation piece that KSDE dealt with. That piece of cheese looks a little bit different in all our buildings. But if we look at the recommendations, it's centered around increasing the amount of external air inside the building, mixing that with the current air and circulating that through the building. In order to do that efficiently, or inefficiently, I guess depending on which way you're looking at efficiency, running the systems 24/7 will keep that air being circulated more often. If you're able to open windows, that's obviously a good option. Taking the time to, or increasing the amount of times that we change filters and looking at different filter options, KSDE had some recommended filters as well. Those are all great recommendations, but we need to consider what our systems have the capability of doing. Our systems are not like our houses. We don't have one or two units. We have hundreds of units all across our rooftops and within our buildings. So when we look at those, some of those weren't designed to run 24/7. So obviously, running them 24/7 is going to make them not run as efficiently. It is going to cost us more money. If we look at systems that are bringing outside air in that maybe weren't designed to do that, if you think about the building we're in right now, the air is warmer because it's cold outside. If we bring the cold air in, we're going to have to spend some more money and some more time to get it warmed up before we can circulate it through the building. Some of our units, we can't even use the recommended filters. We have units that are 20-plus years in the district, and we have some that we just put on over the summer. When you look at our buildings, it's not like we go in and replace all of the units in a building at one time unless it was like at a high school and we did it all at one time. We typically do a section of a roof and another section, and then we also deal with that unit broke down, we're going to have to replace it because it can't be repaired. So you can end up with a hodgepodge of different units all across our buildings. When we look at that and we look at the recommendations that KSDE made, I looked at each of our buildings and I worked with John Geist, our Plant Facilities Director, and I said, "Let's talk about which ones of our buildings meet the recommendations, partially meet the recommendations, and partially meet the recommendations a little bit less." And what we came up with was that we currently have seven buildings that can meet and complete all the recommendations of KSDE. We have four buildings that mostly meet those recommendations or can mostly complete those recommendations. And by mostly, I mean more than 50% of their units have the capacity to do that. We also have seven buildings that have less than 50% capacity to meet those recommendations. In this presentation that we're looking at now, it's specific at our elementary students. So I took it a little bit further and looked at a pre-K through six buildings, which would include the intermediate centers. Of those buildings, six of them can meet the current recommendations, three can mostly meet them, and five can only partially meet them. So that layer of Swiss cheese, there are some buildings that can complete their job, and there are some buildings that can't quite complete their job. We have an indoor air quality study that you approved a couple months, about a month or a half ago. We hope to have the results of that soon. Once that information is received, we will take a look at our long-range facilities plan again. It may cause us to relook at which buildings need to be addressed sooner or reprioritized in the process. There are funds available that we're going to hope to go after and see if we can help maybe increase the time, that we can speed up the time in which we can replace some of those units. So as a, as a look at what we can do to meet that recommendation, obviously, some can and some can't. Any questions on the ventilation piece? Thank you. So continuing the changes to the elementary gating criteria, they have also continued with hand washing. They have added a component that says that buildings can start testing onsite for COVID as a screening procedure. And then the last one is being able to maintain the appropriate staff with substitutes or custodians, bus drivers, all of that. So one of the things that KSDE has said is when they put out this plan, it was intended to be a plan in its total capacity and not for districts to pick and choose which part they can, can meet and which part they can't, and so I'll take this one and not this one. They intended for people to use it in its totality. We're going to talk a little bit more about that when the elementary schools give you their, their recommendations. So we'll go ahead and move on. This is the new gating criteria for KSDE. They have four levels as opposed to our six. The levels orange and red are their highest levels. You will notice that the percent positivity that was mentioned by one of our speakers, for Level Red, is above 15% positivity rate. They also address, much like our gating criteria, new cases, hospitalizations, school attendance, staff, being able to staff the buildings. So all of those are in there. What they changed is, I believe on the next slide, Amanda, the method of learning. So in levels orange and red, used to be, it used to say just pre-K through 12 remote. Now it says pre-K through six will be onsite or hybrid, and the secondary schools will be remote. So those are the differences that they made in that gating criteria.
What athletics is?
Pre-K through five.
Pardon?
Pre-K through five?
Yes, pre-K through five.
Mention how athletics is affected.
Yes, and the athletics follows the remote only, so there are no athletics in orange So on this slide, I did a little history lesson for myself, and I went back to the very beginning of school, and I looked at the data from our weekly meetings, and I put down where we would be if we utilized the navigating change document. And then in parentheses is the number of the level that we utilized that week. So if you will notice, starting with the very first week of school, we would have been in orange, which would have started us in remote. And if you go down through the weeks, we were either orange or red every single week of the school year through the current week. So we would have been remote for this entire year, much as some schools have already experienced. So you can see kind of where our levels go up. You can tell where we went to Level 5 and Level 6, as we, Dr. Carlin mentioned in his notes. Those are where our staff numbers were going up and our community levels were going up as well. Yes, Mark?
So if the number in the currents is the level we were in?
That is the level that we were in that week, yes. So our current numbers, just kind of looking at where we were two weeks ago at the board meeting and where we are now, as Dr. Carlin mentioned, we had a meeting with the Health Department today. So our total active cases, great job, Garden City, those numbers have gone down considerably. The total positives have also dropped quite a bit. The current hospitalizations have dropped some, but not enough to be considered significant. And then the positivity rate, I have three notations on there because the first one is where we were two weeks ago at the board meeting, and then the 65% was last week, and the 48%, 40...
41.
41% is where we are as of today. So that is what we'll show on the Health Department's webpage as of Monday when they change that. So we are back down. So looking at our gating criteria, here is what our form looks like when we look at it every day or every week. We do look at the number of new cases, so that's a decrease, so that box would not be checked. Then we look at the outbreaks. So this would be outbreaks in our school district. So this is specific to the school. And as Dr. Carlin also mentioned, we meet with Holcomb and we meet with the Catholic schools as well during this meeting. So each district or school district looks at this individually. So currently, we have no outbreaks in our schools. This would have been checked, for example, when, for example, Ply-Mell closed for two weeks because of positivity among staff or Jenny Barker or some of the schools that were red. That box would have been checked during those times. Then if you look at, see, I'm still having trouble reading all of this, but the next one, I believe, is hospitalizations and what's, let's see, I can't look at it over here. Yeah, increase in hospital admissions. That one has held the same. If you check Finney County website, that one goes up and down every day. So it can go up a couple and then it comes down, down a little bit. So we checked that because there just really isn't much change. We're not seeing it go down enough to count that. The next part is hospitalizations due to COVID, and that is still checked because anything over 15 is checked, and the website has us at 19 right now. The ICU beds are considered full, that is anything over six. And then the percent positivity is anything over 25% for our district. So we had four boxes checked this week. Then if you look at the positive staff, November, when we made the decision to go to Level 6, and again, this is something kind of reiterating what Dr. Carlin said, if you look at those numbers at that time, we were seeing in the 30s for positive staff. So that's why it was so hard to keep our buildings open. When you have 30 staff a week becoming positive for COVID, it's just, there aren't enough subs to go around. So we had several buildings in red at that time, and that's when we went to Level 6, right after Thanksgiving. If you notice, as we go across, that line is coming down, and we hit a low peak and then we went back up just a little, but not a lot. And Stefan, or Amanda, if you can hit that button one more time. Yeah, there we go. So this week so far, we are at three staff positives. So that's one of the lowest that we've ever had. I'm very, very grateful that our staff are healthy right now. And so all of that combined, the community numbers coming down, our staff positivity going down, all of that is a total picture that led us to feel like we could go back to Level 4 in January. Any questions on that part? Okay, I'm going to let the elementary folks talk about their recommendations.
Good evening. My name is Karen Merle. I'm the principal at AP Hubert Elementary.
I'm Linda Finch. I'm the principal at Ply-Mell and the associated Delta Brown.
And in light of what KSDE presented last week and the headlines that were circulating, we decided that we needed to meet as a committee, the committee that was formed over the summer to put forth this plan, which comprised of lots of different people who represent elementaries all over the school district. And so we reconvened our committee on Monday and had them take a look at the elementary plan and learn a little bit about what KSDE was actually asking for elementary schools to do to be able to be back in session. Our 14-member group really surprised us with what they wanted to do. They were proud of our work that we had put together, feeling that we weren't so far off base, given that this was our first time trying to put something together like that, and had some suggestions for some overall tweaks that we could make to make our plan more friendly for our elementary schools. And those, one of the recommendations was school playgrounds at Levels 5 and, or Levels 4 and 5, not letting children play in, at Level 5, when there's less children in the building, it didn't make a lot of sense. So we changed the wording to where playground equipment would be open and the children would be allowed to play on those on a rotating basis. Yellow classroom children would not be able to play on the equipment, but they would still be able to play on the playground games and things like that. And then purposeful play in kindergarten was also talked about because at Levels 4 and 5, they were doing whole group activities, and there wasn't a lot of play. And so we changed that wording to match Level 3, where they could partner play and stay with those same partners throughout the week and change on the next week after everything has been disinfected. And then we do not recommend any additional level changes because we think we have a good plan, and we would like to recommend that not, we're not making any changes to after-school activities. Most of our teachers do those on a volunteer basis. And at Level 6, if it's already remote, it's pretty stressful for them, and asking them to do something else is a lot. So we decided to keep the activities at the elementary level remote at 6. And then we would like to say that there is a place, a time and a place for Levels 5 and 6, but we would hope that we could stay at Level, baseline of Level 4 as long as possible, as long as the staff and the students are safe, and it is safe to do that, and they can stay healthy, and we have the staff to man the buildings and be there with the kids. I just want to add that this particular slide isn't really an adjustment to our plan. It's more, I'm describing it as, you know, when you get a, an I-message and you want to emphasize something, you get the exclamation points by it. This was just something that came from our committee, from our teachers, that they preferred operating in Level 4 and shutting down if staffing needs couldn't be met. But they do understand...
Yes.
...the need for 5 and 6.
Absolutely. Does that make sense?
Mark, you had a question?
Yeah, just a clarification for purposes of flow of thought. Classroom that's in yellow is because why?
The classroom at yellow would be because there was someone in the class that was at home being quarantined, there's a positive in that class. And so we turned that class to, and then they get room service and things like that. They stay together because there was a quarantine, and they get room service, they get their food delivered to them, and they pretty much stay in that room.
And two visits from the nurse a day. They get some special treatment.
Yes, they get special treatment.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that you have done getting back together and putting this together, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments with regard to this portion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to go ahead and address this portion of the report? Dana?
I have a little question for Ms. LaBarbara.
Glenda, would you mind coming back up? Dana?
So I just want to clarify what you presented, and of course, I clicked off on my tiny phone. But the information that you presented had what, what levels we were at, when had we followed the gating criteria put out, we would have been at higher levels, correct?
Correct.
So the question that I have now is, I'm a little confused. Are we still looking at the gating criteria that's being proposed?
No.
Or, okay, so you gave us that information that is from KSDE, but we're not, we're sticking with our own plan and not necessarily following...
Correct.
The new...
Yes, and that's one of the reasons the elementary group got together, because we wanted to see if it was something they wanted to consider. But when we looked at using it in totality like they recommend, we don't have the ventilation. We do feel like there's a place for Level 5 and 6 in our community and in our schools when we can't staff them, for example. So they didn't want to change our plan, nor did they want to go to KSDE's plan.
Okay, that's what I wanted for clarification. So, thank you. And I did want to tell Ms. Merle, Ms. Finch, that I really appreciated the time and effort that went to the original plan. Yours was a very detailed plan, and so the extra... Yours was a very detailed plan, and so the extra time that you put in, again, thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments with regard to this portion of the update? Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that we accept the tweaks or revisions to the gating criteria as presented.
There's a motion to approve the elementary recommendations.
Thank you.
Is there a second, by, Mark, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Dr. Hannigan was, I'm going to give it to Dr. Hannigan, sorry, Janine.
Not wrapped.
Okay. Is there any discussion with regard to the motion? I also want to thank you guys for all of your hard work, and since this was kind of part of it, too, Dr. Carlin, I'm really excited that you're making the meetings on Thursdays, too. So I think it gives families a little bit of time to kind of adjust for the upcoming week, so.
And I may just clarify a little there. The reason the meetings are late in the week is in order to look at a complete set of data. We're typically looking at the data from the week before, and it takes the Health Department that long because some of those test results trickle in the following week. So it's, it's really thanks to them and them doing some extra things that they were able to let us move that meeting up to Thursday. So thank you.
Stephanie, would you mind doing the roll?
For?
Aye.
Dr. Hannigan?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
I think that takes us to the next proposal. Mr. Towne? I'm sorry, you're going to have to come up.
So thank you guys for having us back. We appreciate it, a second opportunity at this. When we were asked by the board to go back and readdress this and relook at the activities recommendation, the big three things that our committee heard was the plan needs to be more equitable, the plan needs to provide for community safety, and we need more detail in the plan. And we now have a plan that's a 712 plan to address the equity issue. We have the approval of two local doctors on our committee, as well as the county health department, and hopefully this will provide considerably more detail for you guys. So the district activities plan, one of the early things that we would like to address is consider the revisions that the district activities plan allows seven, grade seven through 12 district activities and athletics to follow the district-level baseline for activities and competitions and practices. The reasoning behind this is the equity piece. This would allow everybody to be on the same page, activities, athletics, and practice-wise. If the... If a school gets bumped to Level Five and the district is still at Level Four, this would still allow all activities and athletics to follow that district Level Four guidelines. The big reason for this is to allow equity across the attendance guidelines of all these games. If KH happened to be at Level Five and Horse Good happened to be at Level Four, Horse Good would be allowed fans, while just a few blocks away, KH would not be allowed fans. Madam President, do you want to go through these one at a time and ask questions because there's so many, one at a time, or at the end?
I think we'll do questions completely at the end.
Okay. So that's, that's the first revision that we're asking for, is for the district, for us to follow with activities and athletics, for us to follow the district baseline for those activities and athletics. The second thing that we're asking for is to consider a revision to district plan Level Four, to allow a maximum, maximum capacity of two spectators per participant not to exceed 35% of the total capacity of the venue for all indoor events. We would also like you to consider a revision to district plan Level Four to allow the band at Level Four. The two reasons for this, first, for two spectators per participant. This would fall in line with something very similar to what KESHA is currently doing. KESHA allows two spect, or two family, or, excuse me, two parents or guardians per participant. We would allow two spectators per participant during this time. If our venue could not support two spectators per participant, we would cut that down to one spectator per participant. If the venue could not support one spectator per participant, then we would not allow any spectators. An example of that would be our YMCA pool. We're not sure, actually, we know that we wouldn't want spectators at the YMCA pool because there's not enough room to allow for social distancing. The reason for the adjustment to the band, when we developed this, they had not come out with the band and music guidelines yet. Now that we have clearer guidelines from KESHA on band and music, we're asking to allow band at indoor activities. We now have new mitigation procedures, bell covers, band-specific masks, better ideas on social distancing that would allow for the band to be able to play at indoor activities such as basketball.
Mr. Towne?
Yep.
I have a question.
Yep.
I know that we'll probably get some pushback on the two participants per student or participant, two spectators per participant. Do we have the ability to be able to livestream those events out? We do the football games, I know, but do we have the ability to livestream those things out so that other people can actually see those, so other family members, things like that can be engaged?
Yeah, we do have that ability. We just had our choir concert. It wasn't livestreamed. They actually made a video, did a whole production, put it together and put it out. But we do have the capability of live streaming, live streaming multiple events at one time, and that's what we would be doing the entire time. Anytime we have an event, we'll livestream those events.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at the next page, it gives some clarification on the next slide. It gives some clarification of our two-ticket policy. It defines who participants are, players, coaches, student managers, cheer squads, dance teams, pep bands, student journalists. Those are all, what we would classify as participants in Level Four and Five. All spectators must be masked the entire time. Children and infants, if a mother and father come in, they cannot bring their child or infant. That falls in line with the KESHA guidelines for two tickets. All district activities and athletics, 712, are impacted by this. How we would be able to know for sure who was getting in and who wasn't getting in, we would keep a pass gate. Most schools are already doing this that are allowing activities right now. The parent or guardian or spectator would show up. They would check at the pass gate to see if their name's on the list, show an ID, get their name checked off, and be able to enter the event that way with identification. From December 10th through January 28th, we would still have to follow the KESHA guidelines for KESHA activities of the two parents or guardians per family. So we would still have to follow that for our KESHA activities. If we continue to be in Level Four after January 28th, we would transition to this. On the next page, you'll see it's just a, an example of the KESHA guidelines in comparison to the guidelines that we set forth. The big difference is the term spectators versus the term parent or guardian. And the reason is, is because we know a lot of our kids here, not only at Garden City High School, but at our elementary schools and middle schools, a lot of their parents work in the evenings, and the spectator is often a grandma or grandpa, or an aunt and uncle. By the KESHA guidelines, they're not allowing the aunts and uncles, they're not allowing the grandmas and grandpas, they're only allowing the immediate guardian. We thought it would be better, our committee discussed it, thought it would be better to use the word spectators so that they could have an aunt or uncle come, they could have a grandma or grandpa come. The next consideration is the consideration to allow middle school competitions and events in Level Five. As you know, we currently have practice for those middle school people in Level Five, but we do not allow competition and events in Level Five. I'm going to let Matt and Adriana kind of comment on why we went that direction.
Yeah, so back with the last meeting before, when we met, we just weren't sure. We just had girls' basketball and wrestling lose their seasons, so we were kind of trying to be fair, I guess you should say. We wanted to be fair to those sports or whatnot that just lost their seasons. We didn't want to come back around and say, oh, we're going to make changes just for boys' basketball, when girls' basketball just lost their season. We didn't know how parents or players would react to that. So we did call a few parents, talked to them. Overwhelming majority just said, you know, we don't care at this point, let them play, let's just do what's best for them. So at that point, we decided we would jump on board and make this revision and request this. So that was the biggest reason, was just fairness with the other activities who just lost their seasons, so.
The other request that we have is to allow the band in Level Five with the reduction down to 35% of the band to allow for greater social distancing. Obviously, in Level Five, as, as we currently have, there are no spectators in Level Five. So if the district is in Level Five, we, we will not have anybody in attendance at those games, just the essential personnel workers. Activity district plan Level Six, we would ask that you consider revision to Level Six to allow activities and athletics to practice in groups no larger than 16. Please remember, there are no perform, we're not asking for performances or competitions in Level Six. We're asking that they practice in groups no larger than 16. Why the number 16, you may wonder, it was suggested by the county health department for that number. How this would help our groups, we have the play coming up in, in January. It would allow somebody like Ms. Hilt to get her tech kids in here to work the theater. While in Level Six, they could still come in, work the lights, work the sound, make sure everything is working okay, and get rid of those 16, bring another 16 in, and actually start going through parts of the play, so that if they go to Level Six immediately prior to her, to her musical, they could come out of Level Six. When we come out of Level Six, they could immediately have that play. Currently, with no practices in Level Six, we're not, we're not able to come out and do stuff immediately because we're going to need time to prepare. Show choir, the same way, in talking with Ms. Van Timmerman and show choir, 16 would be a good number for her. Sometimes her groups are larger than 16, but she could split those groups into two and work specific parts of those groups. The, the biggest part of this is by allowing us to be able to practice, we do not have the delay when we come out of Level Six. We immediately get back to our performances and get back to all our events without having to cancel. We used to work off a percentage. The Fannie County Health Department recommended that we go away from the percentage because some groups are larger than other groups and go to a specific number, and that's how we came up with the number 16. On the next page, you'll find our student COVID pledge, the USD 457 student COVID pledge. This is a student pledge that the coaches will keep on file. Every single student must sign the pledge before they practice or participate in their activities. Coaches and sponsors will handle all infractions and report all infractions to either the AD or principals of those schools. The importance of the pledge is to remind our students that they not only need to keep themselves safe, but they need to keep our team safe, our schools safe, and our community safe, so we can continue to have the activity that they want to be involved with. On the next page, or later on, you guys can see the details of the pledge itself. It's all the things that you think would be in there, such as mask-wearing, proper handwashing, social distancing, all of those, all of those essential things to keep us safe. On the next page, you'll find the general district plan changes. These do not fall anywhere inside of a specific level. These are things that we added to increase the safety of our community. All students and sponsors will complete the USD 457 screener with temperature checks, with nurse oversight and principal oversight daily. Paper logs will be reviewed by the school nurse and principals and ADs daily. You'll find a copy of that. We've spoken with Ms. Scholl in our health department here at the district and found the most efficient way of doing that. You'll see an example of that a little bit later on, where the coaches put their roster onto a piece of paper, kind of like Alex suggested last time. She was some concerned about HIPAA violations, so the coaches themselves will actually keep track of that, check off, go individually, person by person, and ask them the questions as they walk in, take their temperature, check yes or no. If a student checks yes to any of those, they have to leave immediately, go and be cleared by a school nurse before they can come back. School nurse may clear them right away, send them right back, or the school nurse may request that they go and get a negative COVID test. That's how the screener will operate. Again, it will have oversight when school nurses are available to help with those screeners. They will come and help with those screeners. If they're not available, those screeners will be reviewed every single day by our school nurses as our coaches take them in to meet with them. We will eliminate the gator-style mask. Coaches and students must wear traditional-style masks. We define traditional-style masks as masked with ear loops that cover both the nose, mouth, and mouth without significant gaps. All activities and athletic directors, coaches, and sponsors will complete the National Federation of High School COVID-19 online course. A lot of our coaches have done that already today, and they will file those with the building principals and/or athletic directors of the buildings. All activities and athletic directors, coaches, and sponsors will complete the COVID-19 training from the school nurse in conjunction with the county health department and the athletic director or school principal. Ms. Scholl and the county health department are getting together tomorrow, if this passes, to go over the details of this, and then on January 4th, at our end service, we have time set aside for them to do this training. Schools will continue to call, to follow the COVID-19 guidelines set forth by KESHA and/or their sanctioning body in those recommendations. And obviously, outside of that is the student pledge. On the next page, you'll see an example of the student pledge and the details of the student pledge. Again, every single student will sign this that participates in an activity. Those will be filed away with their individual sponsors or coaches. If they are in multiple activities, they will sign one for each activity so that the coach has that on hand. Our coaches requested that we do a physical paper and that they keep the physical paper so that they know it's been signed, and they have that on file in their paperwork. On the other side, you'll find the USD 457 screener. So one thing that was brought up last time, and I didn't do a very good job of being clear about it, is who the plan was reviewed by. One thing that was nice about this, this time, and I should have had some forethought before putting the committee together last time, is Mr. Wallace and Ms. Boers volunteered to be on this group this time. Our coaches appreciated it, our sponsors appreciated it, I and our principals appreciated it, so thank you guys for being a part of that team. We had 11 activity or club sponsors and coaches. We had our middle school and high school principals involved with this, as well as the ADs, the superintendent, the deputy superintendent. We had the president and vice president of the school board. We had two local doctors, Dr. Strandmark and our team doctor, Dr. Rosin. We had the former secretary of the KDHE review this with me, Dr. Bob Moser. We had the director of the Fannie County Health Department, Colleen Dries, our district athletic trainer. And last night, I would be remiss if I didn't say the plan was approved by the vision select team 12 to 0. So that's the changes that we would like to set forth, ask you guys as a board to consider and vote on. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer for our committee in the best way that, that represents them. Yep.
I don't have a question really, but a comment. Thank you for going back and, and putting a lot more detail into it and getting more input from club sponsors and everybody else at the table, too. It is very much appreciated. I know this work is hard, and it's, there's just a lot to it in a short amount of time, so your work is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. The group put tons of time and effort into this, and we appreciate the comments.
Yeah, that's very obvious.
Jennifer?
A comment, too. And I want to piggyback on what she said. Thank you for coming back with another plan. I don't feel like the last plan was insufficient, but that the rules got changed on you. And despite that, I think this plan is better, so thank you for taking the time to do that, and I'm excited that we're including the middle schools on that. And I just want to bring up one concern I have because it might make a difference on how the motion's made. Is that okay? Or you want me to wait?
Go ahead.
Okay. I feel like everything on this plan is to point, and the best we can do in these times. I do have concerns about the pledge that we're asking our students to sign. I'm concerned about the overreach on that, asking them to- It's reaching out into the community and their home life, and I have concerns about that. I feel like it's parents' responsibility to supervise that, and we're going to get some throwback on that if we include that in the plan. If that's something that we do feel that we have to do, then I think this pledge should be signed by every staff member, administrator, employee of the district to also agree to follow that. So if the motion is to include all of these in one, I'm not going to be able to approve that plan, so we may want to consider separating the motions into distinct areas. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mark?
Thank you. Again, thank you so much for all your work. And I think it's indicative of some leadership that was mentioned or referenced to earlier in what your group provides to the kids of our community. I do also want to comment that I don't feel like, well, first of all, it's wonderful to have the best collaboration possible that we can have between students, the USD 457 resources, and the home family. I think it's well documented, the success of students depends on family and parental engagement in student education experience. So I think the pledge is a reasonable request, and I hearken it to other things we ask of students and certainly expect in conduct out in the community, you know, drugs, alcohol, things like that. And so I don't see that pledge being some kind of an overreach. I think it's very consistent with the kind of expectations that coaches, band directors, and others place on students and how they represent their individual teams and activities, but also the community at large. Just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Alex?
Dr. Carrow, Mr. Tone, don't we, our student handbook? Sorry. In our student handbook, at the beginning of the year, I know when my kids are in high school, they had to sign that student handbook about being a great student, best of the school, and all that stuff. Do we still have that now?
Yes, we still have student handbooks and the students and, I think, parents have to sign off.
Students and parents have to sign off.
They're aware of what's in there. You know, specifically on this, if I can maybe expand on that a little bit.
Please.
With extracurricular activities, extracurricular activities, participation in those is a privilege. It's not a right. And it's longstanding that the school district has the authority to put conditions upon participation in those activities. Now, nobody wants to be heavy-handed in this. I think from listening to the conversations with the sponsors, like Mark said, this is no different than the rules that we typically had. Many of us remember them probably from our high school days, you know, that you are going to represent your team and your school. I do think back in my day, there were even things like how long my hair could be and whether I could have facial hair and some of those kind of things that we typically don't see in those expectations from coaches now. But this is a way to encourage responsible behavior, and this will be up to each individual coach as to how they, just like their team expectations are now, those things like represent well, you know, go to bed at a reasonable time, take care of your health, you know, don't do something that would jeopardize your team. This would be no different. I think that was the, kind of the thought process from the group as they developed that. But the district does have the authority to do something like this because it's an extracurricular activity.
Well, if I could, I want to thank Mr. Tone and Mr. Nordby and Mrs. Carrow and Mr. Byer, the coaches, the sponsor, Mrs. Dries, Dr. Strandmark, for giving up their time the last couple of weeks to make the modifications to this policy. In my comments at the last board meeting, I said that Level 6 was where the rubber hit the road, and I wanted to see a lot more detail. And I think I discussed that with Mr. Tone before that, too, so I disagree with you, Jennifer, with your comments. So, but Mr. Tone, you and your committee excelled at doing what you did here, and I really appreciate the time that you took, in particular with talking to me the last two weeks. I think I blew up your phone in your email a lot, so thank you so much for all of the efforts that you made in reaching out not only to the board, but to the health department, to Dr. Strandmark. And I think you also talked to Dr. Scholl, too.
Yeah, I did. I did talk to Dr. Scholl, yeah.
So I think we've got a lot of detail in Level 6. We've got a lot of detail overall now, and we've got a much more comprehensive plan, not only in Level 6, but in Level 4 and 5 and overall, that I think is going to carry us into next semester, knock on wood. Hopefully, we won't have to worry about it too much. Is it what everyone wants? No, we don't have a magic wand, and I know that. But I think it's a good compromise with everything that we're dealing with, and hopefully, it's going to be keeping the community safe and it's what's good for kids. And you answered the charge that we gave you, and I really appreciate that. And you listened to what we asked of you, and I appreciate everything that you did and what your subcommittee did. So thank you for all that you did. I really appreciate it. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for being a part of it.
So at this time, is there a motion?
I do have, I do have an ask or a comment. Just in reading more closely, and I'm sorry I didn't do this beforehand, but it is a little bit hypocritical when we do tell our students we'll allow them to practice in small groups, but it says, "I will practice physical distancing when meeting in smaller groups and will wear my mask." When they're practicing in smaller groups or getting together in smaller groups and not wearing a mask when they're doing that, I do think that that is maybe a little, like I said earlier, hypocritical because when you're meeting in smaller groups and with the same people that you're practicing with, or let's just say even in a classroom, that's part of the recommendation is just be, you know, smaller groups. So I do question that last sentence. I don't know that it would completely deter my vote, but it doesn't, it's not completely reasonable to me.
Is there a motion?
Before I make a motion, I just wanted to ask, was there some thought process into that by chance, just in case you have something to offer?
Can I ask for some clarification on that? Do you think that, are you saying we shouldn't wear masks in small groups?
Well, I'm just saying that there are times when students are going to be in small groups together, even like, let's say, a part of a practice. I mean, there's times in after practice, and I know they've been masking up, like, on the sidelines and things like that, but I'm just trying to think of, I mean, you could consider a family a small group or something, you know what I mean? Like, that just seems more unreasonable.
Are you comparing the pledge or just?
The pledge, just the pledge.
Okay.
Right?
To practices. That's what you're com-
I'm just saying that whole sentence. Like, "I will practice physical distancing when meeting in small groups and will wear a mask."
I'm wondering if that's cut off, actually.
What's that?
I think it says, it's supposed to say "when appropriate." There's not a period at the end there, so there may have been a typo in the end of the sentence.
I'm fine with "when appropriate."
"When appropriate." And I'll make that, I'll make sure that edit gets made.
Thank you.
Madam President, to get this on the table for action, I would move that we adopt the changes as presented.
All of the revisions?
All of them, yes.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mark to approve the revisions as presented, seconded by Alex. Any other comments?
I did want to make another comment.
Please, Mark.
It goes without saying almost, but I just don't want to miss the opportunity that, as Mr. Tone pointed out, there's a lot of discussion and review by the Vision Committee that's on both sets of proposals. And as he said, it passed very well yesterday. And that's a lot of dedicated, volunteer, hard-working reviewers. And I just really appreciate all the work they did, and that was in addition to the team that Mr. Tone and the other activity sponsors had put in on this. So a lot of work, and it's just very admirable. Just want to say that.
Any other comments?
I have one, Jennifer. I just want to reiterate that I'm not for the pledge. What they're asking kids to, I mean, we're asking them to be responsible for the community again on their everyday actions and interactions. And it's different than the illegal activities in the other pledges that they sign not to alcohol, be, interact with alcohol and drugs and do things like that. And you commented on the hair length and the facial hair. Well, obviously, there people found that there was issue with that, and it's discrimination now considered in these times, and so that's not in there. So I'm really, I cannot be in favor of this motion as long as that pledge is in there. I think as a board, we're representing that we're not going to allow parents to parent anymore and that we're going to take over that parenting in their place, and I don't think that's okay.
Dana?
Yes?
You have anything?
Nope.
Janine?
No.
Dr. Hannigan?
Yes, I do. I think the system worked the way it's supposed to. We had some really difficult feedback for Mr. Tone. We received some very difficult feedback from our community. And in light of that difficult feedback, Mr. Tone kept at it, engaged a lot of different stakeholders, got a unanimous vote on the committee, which includes the health department, one of the criteria that I set forth for myself. Unanimous vote in these times. Am I 100% in agreement with it? No. Is it my responsibility to set aside whatever disagreements I might still have and move to the center? Move to try to find what this community and this school district needs? Yeah, I'm very much, I've been saying all along, I really am look, I've been looking for a way to find middle ground, and I think we found it. I commend Mr. Tone. I commend this board. It's not easy to receive difficult feedback and hold true. But it happened, and out of it came a better plan. I would be interested to know if anyone actually objects to all of the plan. If anyone can say, "This plan is not as good as the plan that they last voted on." I would be interested to know that, but at any rate, I support it as it's written, all of it.
Alex?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Tone and his staff and the coaches, the committee. It was an honor and a privilege to be a part of that committee. It's the first time I've ever been on Zoom with 24 other people. That was kind of neat. But it was great to hear all the comments, positive and negative from the coaches, the impact on students, the impact on staff. It was great to hear all the information from both sides to make a determination on my part, an opinion, if you will. So I appreciate that, and let me reapply that process. I do want to concur to some of Dr. Hannigan's comments about that, that it was voted 12 to 0. We have good community feedback. We get good numbers. We have good data. I had no problem forward with this. As far as we've treated this policy the last six or seven months, we're treating it as a living document, a liquid document. And so if in the next two or three weeks, four weeks, we want to come back and revisit this pledge, Mr. Tone, I think there might be an opportunity to do that, once we kind of-
I'm good.
Yeah.
We're good for a while.
So, we're good for a while, but, you know. No, I appreciate that. For all the emails and comments that we've got, I got some good, positive ones as well. Just because people remain quiet doesn't mean they don't have an opinion on it. Our phones blew up. We got positive comments on that, people saying keep the school closed. And I would also argue the fact that we need to have schools open, and they got to hear both sides of that argument. So I appreciate the discussion that this board has given us and given me this last couple of months, especially the last couple of weeks. So I appreciate everybody's input.
Since our last meeting, I've been repeatedly told I should not look at community. I'm a school board member and should only concern myself with what's best for students. That's why we have that chair there. If I were, if we were in our boardroom, there'd be a sign nearby that says, "Quality learning, responsible citizens." Except our students don't live in a bubble. They live in this community. They're a part of it. Let me give you some numbers. 65, 300,000, 25,000, 572, 34, 1,200. Why are these numbers important? They're our positivity rate, the average amount of funds in a year for our sponsorship from our community, from community donors, the money donated on average from our district to the community, yesterday's current number of total active COVID cases, the number of COVID deaths as of yesterday, and the amount of money the Buffalo football team donated after the Tyson fire. If it weren't for the community, we wouldn't have as nice of a Jumbotron down at Buffalo Football Stadium. We wouldn't have the scoreboard that we have down in the gym. We wouldn't have curtains at Clifford Hope Auditorium. We wouldn't have the nice new basketball jerseys that our basketball team will be wearing. We wouldn't necessarily have the food for our teams that they get at the games. We are interdependent with our community. Schulman Crossing happened in part because USD 457 agreed to waive- Schulman Crossing happened in part because USD 457 agreed to waive some property taxes. Hobby Lobby, Dick's Sporting Goods, Old Navy's coming soon. In the last 10 years, no housing development has gone up without USD 457 agreeing to waive property taxes for a period of time. What if USD 457 did not agree to that? Would Garden City and Finney County have grown as much as it has? The four governing bodies of this community have played well with each other. We are working together to build this community. Our teams support this community. Our groups support this community. They have held food drives, they supported this community after the Tyson fire, our basketball team rang bell, the bells for Salvation Army, and they've donated money at the half times of the football games. Well, at least they did last year, we didn't get to do that this year, but Buffalos know what it means to give back to the community. I'm not a Garden City native, I'm not a native Buffalo, but I'm proud to be raising two Buffalos who have been coached by many throughout their time in this district. Those coaches and sponsors have taught them what it means to bleed brown and white. These coaches and sponsors have instilled in them a sense of community that they understand why this particular policy is important, and I appreciate the effort that those coaches and sponsors made in the past two weeks, and why when things are bad, as they have been the past few weeks, and why we had to go to Level 6, and why we needed to protect our community, and why it was important not necessarily to be running for the hills. We rely on each other to do the right thing. We know what we need to do to keep our kids in school and back to competing, and right now, that is to protect our community and mitigate as much as possible and to keep those mitigation efforts up. So, I'm hoping that we continue to wear our masks and wash our hands and watching our distance for our community and for our kids, which is why I support the COVID pledge. That is one of the things that we discussed at our last meeting, so we can keep us in Level 4 and get keeping our kids in school, so we can keep them playing, so we can watch, it's that simple. And so, I believe we should call the question on the motion. Stephanie?
Laura?
Aye.
Dr. Hannigan?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Nay.
Alex?
Aye.
Madam President.
Dr. Carlin, I think you wanted to address that, a question from Jennifer as well, didn't you?
Well, I'd like to make a comment, and first, the, the meeting on Monday, December 7th was a difficult meeting for everybody. And I think it was eloquently said here by several people tonight, how important it was to come back after consideration, after listening to the feedback that was given, and, and coming up with a plan and, and bringing that back. I'd like to thank Mr. Tone for his efforts to do that. We are fortunate to have someone like Mr. Tone who leads our Activities Department here in the school district. We have wonderful sponsors and, and coaches that came together to provide their best thinking, again, to, to put together a plan that, that moves us forward and takes into consideration how difficult of an issue this really is. We, we are fortunate in our community to have some opportunities here, some opportunities to take care of our kids, but also take care of one another in our community, and the path through this is together. And I think what, while it's okay for us to disagree on topics, it's not okay for us to be disagreeable with one another about it. Everybody wants the same thing, we want what's best for our kids. We might differ a little on how we get there, we might differ a little on some of the details, but our kids are going to come through this much better if we can work together and not make this about people or personalities, but to focus on the issues and to be willing to compromise and sacrifice, even when it doesn't fit our situation perfectly. Again, I want to compliment our coaches and sponsors, who, to probably put it in our coaches' language, had a big loss on Monday the 7th, but they didn't dwell on that, they were willing to come back and work to come up with something that creates some options and opportunities. Those are the kind of lessons that our kids in our activities and our sports need to learn. Lastly, Jennifer, I think you make a great point in that if this pledge is meaningful, people should be willing to do it. I don't think legally I can require staff members to sign it, but my team and I have discussed this, and tonight, the four of us will be the first ones to sign this pledge, and we will not only sign it, but we will agree to follow it and abide by it, and we will agree to hold one another accountable for that. And the purpose is to increase the chances that we have more face-to-face days of school, and to increase the chances that our kids get to continue to participate in the activities and the sports that they're passionate about, and to compete and to have as normal of seasons as possible. So, before we leave here tonight, Mr. Hogan, Mrs. LaBarber, Mrs. Knoll, and I will sign the pledge and turn him into Coach Tone.
I think that takes us to board open discussions. Jennifer?
I could go first again?
Yep.
Okay. Well, and I, I go back and forth on whether I want to discuss anything else, but I believe in trusting your gut, and if I lose sleep over this, then it needs to be brought up, and I want to thank everyone that came to speak tonight on all sides of this, because I don't think we should be on sides, we should be doing what's best for our kids. And I don't have an agenda, I don't, not trying to disagree with my board, I'm here to do what's best for kids. I do think going to Level 6 was a mistake, I think it was based on skewed numbers, and we need to look at how that positivity rate is stated. I think the 65% is skewed. I know there's positives being counted from locations where negatives are not. And I think we made a mistake not including Compass, our social workers, in the committee when we're considering our levels. And I believe if we go back again, we'd probably, I imagine, we'd want to include them, because the mental health of our kids is, it's bigger than you realize, and they're part of the community, too. And when we're only talking about COVID deaths that are less than 1% for the majority of the population, and that we're more likely dying in a car accident than dying from COVID, and we're keeping our kids at home, and all of our mental health facilities are full, and that was never brought up, that concerns me, and I, I want to apologize from myself. I can't speak for the rest of the board that we didn't include that in our decisions. And I hope we can go forward with that. I, I've tried to support the plan in the best I can and support the board, and sincerely, all I'm trying to do is do what's best for kids, and I honestly believe they need to be in school, and we need to start including them when we say "community," because they're part of our community, too. And we have every age range speaking out for them to be in school, even the ones at the highest risk. And we need to think about our small businesses, because keeping kids out of school and restricted is also hurting our community and hurting our small businesses more than, more than we realize. So, I, I hope the rest of the board members know that I support you in your opinions, even when they differ, and I want to stand alongside of you the best we can, as long as we're fighting for that chair right there. So, and I'm going to continue to do that, and even if it puts me in, in a spotlight that necessarily not everybody likes or makes me uncomfortable, it is what it is. I'm not here to make anyone uncomfortable or infringe on them personally or hurt your feelings. I'm here to do what's best for kids, and I hope you understand that. That's all I have.
Dana?
Well, again, I would just like to thank everybody who takes the time to send an email, a text, a phone call. This time, guys, I don't think I'm going to be able to get back to you, everybody, it's just so much. But please know that they are read, they are considered, and they are appreciated. I particularly really love it when I get emails from students, and I'm, I'm very proud of them when they take a stand for something that they believe in. So, like Jennifer, you know, I'm really, I'm proud of, of the board that, that I serve with, and I oftentimes don't agree either, and that's our job. We shouldn't always agree, because we represent the community. You all voted us, and nobody thinks the same. And so, I appreciate and value Jennifer's opinion as much as any other, and that's what we're here for. As a board, we're here to represent the community, and as we've all seen, the community doesn't agree on everything, but we can be kind, and we can be friends outside of whatever issue we're determining. And I hope that, that we continue to do that, to try to come together more than we divide ourselves because of one or two or however many issues. That's, it's just not conducive to result in anything positive. The emails that I got, and I responded that, I hope you run for the school board, I hope you know I, I was absolutely, I absolutely meant that. We have some people that really, you know, put some heart, and they try to come up with ideas or ways to support. I don't know how many people said, "I'm going to sign up to be a sub." That's awesome, and thank you for that. It's really hard to come up here and, and make decisions. We're not making decisions that are for ourselves or for our families or even our friends' family, you know, our friends' kids. We're trying to make the best decision that we can for the district, and that includes our teachers, who work tremendously hard and who value our students, but we're all part of the community, and we just need to recognize that. So, again, I just, I thank you all, I thank my fellow board members for the time that, that you give to this issue and so many more. So, and Dr. Carlin and your staff as well, teachers, that just includes everybody. Thanks.
Mark?
I don't have too much in the interest of time, it's just, I've, I've said comments earlier, they're, they're very good, and I really appreciate Dr. Carlin and his leadership team offering to make that, that pledge, and it's inspiring, and we'll just keep working at this. I think there's, there's strength in diversity of thought, because new ideas come in that way, as was said earlier, and some testimony, and, and it's all good. There's a lot of information out there that, that we haven't specifically reviewed, I think from the Teachers Association, good efforts there, a lot of comments from that survey they sent out, so that just adds to the volume, and that communication and finding ways to improve our, our avenues of communication. We've talked about that a lot on the board in the past, and, and there are some really good things coming out of this very horrible process of COVID-19 issues, and so, I'm confident, at least, I don't plan on forgetting what we've learned, and, and I'm optimistic how we move forward into 2021.
Janine?
So, I think we've all learned a lot through this process, and looking at the decisions that have had to be made, and the differences in opinions and the comments that we receive. Jennifer, I agree with Dana, if we ever get to a point that we all agree on something, then we'll quit growing, and we can't afford to remain stagnant, because that means stagnancy for our kids, too. We have to be able to learn to disagree and still be able to treat each other with respect. And that sometimes is easier, I think, for kids to understand than it is for adults. Sometimes they're the leaders when we should be looking at them for how they treat each other and how they look at some things. I appreciate the open dialogue, I appreciate all of the feedback that I've gotten from people. For every one email that I've got saying we need to be in school, I've received another email saying, "Please don't let us go back in school because it's not safe," they don't feel safe. And I understand both of those, which makes it a completely gut-wrenching decision to, to make those decisions, because you know, no matter what decision you make, someone is going to be hurt and somebody is going to be upset, and you don't want to hurt anybody, you just want to do what's best for the kids. But I think we can all learn from these experiences, and we can learn to do things in a different way and collaborate in different ways and find out different voices and engage some of the voices that haven't been engaged before. I love the kids that have reached out, because that self-advocacy piece and showing up and talking to what they believe in is something that a lot of kids wouldn't do. I don't know that I would have sent an email to the school board, speaking up for what I wanted to see when I was in high school, and so, I commend them. I commend you as being willing to do that and being able to step out of the comfort zone and being willing to do that for yourself. I'd like to say congratulations, too, to Mr. Nordby for your award of the Principal of the Year for Region 6. Thank you for all you do, we're very lucky to have you here, and congratulations. I think we've come a long way since the beginning of the year, and I'm excited to see where we go. Hopefully, in the spring, we won't have to worry quite as much, we can get out a little bit more. It's a lot tougher definitely through the, the winter months, so, but thank you all for coming tonight and for staying through all of this. So, that's all I have for now.
Dr. Hannigan?
Thinking about the people who will sit up here in the future, it's a pretty good chance that they'll come from those who are watching this on YouTube or those who are here, those who were here last week, or two weeks ago, I should say. And I'm thinking about what kind of message do we send them, and I think in the end, we sent them a very positive one. I've had many people ask me, some outright say to me, "I told you not to run for the board." More of them since this came up, more of them after what I said two weeks ago. I wonder, as we go forward, if we think about those kids that were sitting there tonight, and what kind of message they got from us about how this process works and how we get to the best that we can do, they are paying attention, so are all of the people who are online watching us. And if we want to continue to have the best that we can have up here, we need to remember that this is, this is tough. This isn't just tough when everybody's paying attention, this is particularly tough when no one's paying attention, when you understand that there might not be anybody else in the community who asks a question that you have in your mind, who read a page of 140-some pages, who went through a line item of a budget that perhaps is almost impossible to understand unless you go in and you ask KJ over and over, "Explain this..." and you ask KJ over and over, "Explain this to me," until you actually get it. And you know, in those moments, that if it wasn't for each of us in those moments, that no one was going to ask that question. No one is watching. That's the really hard time to be up here, because no one gets it. It's a privilege. It's a privilege to have the feedback that I get, even if it isn't always easy to hear, but it's a privilege. It's a privilege to be able to say it and be in a country where you can say it, in a community where people appreciate you saying it, even if the words, my words, are not always exactly what I wanted to say, or taken in the method or manner that they were meant. But I do feel privileged to be here. I can't believe the kid who didn't have the experience that you all wish for your own when he was in school is actually sitting on a school board. Perhaps, once again, the system does work the way it's supposed to. Thank you, everybody.
Alex?
Thanks, thanks, Dr. Hannigan. It's kind of hard to follow. I just want to say thank you to all the community emails, phone calls, the support we have from the students as well. I hope that we get to see you at every board meeting. In two weeks, we have another one, so please come. I, I've got to echo all the fellow board members here. It's, they kind of take the words out of your mouth when you're, you're last to speak, one of the last to speak. So I agree with everybody on this board. We're all in a very tight spot. Some of it's good, some of it's bad. Some meetings go rather quickly. Some meetings go into four hours. We signed up for this. We volunteered. What Dr. Hannigan said, it's a privilege. Sometimes you question that, that privilege, but at the same time, when you see a student's success, and a parent's success, or, and a district's success, it, it's, it's the payoff for me. So I appreciate and thank everybody for all their comments and support, good or bad. So thank you, everybody.
I want to thank you all for the emails as well, and I apologize if we don't get them responded to as quickly as you might want them to. I know I had to put an "out of office" on my email to let you guys know that it might be next week. You know, it, it may sound weird, because, you know, I'm a lawyer, but I'm also a small business owner, because I have my own firm. So, you know, it sometimes takes me a while to respond back because of other obligations. So I apologize if it takes me a little while to respond back, and I'm also trying to look for answers for you, especially if you want to know how much something costs. I might have to do some digging, or it may take me a while to track down KJ to say, "Hey, how much does something cost?" So I apologize, because, you know, we do get a lot of information, and if it takes us a while to dig through our emails to find it, or to get ahold of someone to give us that answer, I apologize. But it's great to get those emails and be able to explain all of the information that we get with regard to something like this, or even if it's something like, you know, the track over at Horace Good, and explain the thought process behind that, and why we're doing anything in the district, because there's a lot of different facets to the decisions that we make. It's not just one-sided. There's a lot of different parts to it, and, I know, I like to explain all the different parts to it. So, and then I'd like to thank the, the coaches again for letting me listen to you the other day and being able to hear your side of things, too. And, you know, I have a lot of respect for the coaches and the sponsors and all that you do and the giving of your time to our kids. And, you know, I know a lot of you guys have to deal with my kids, and I know they're not easy. So thank you for all that you do for our kids, and giving them that inner strength to be able to move forward with all that they can be able to accomplish. And, you know, whether it's the football team, or basketball, or the anime club, or the green club, or whatever, theater, you know, we have so much to offer here at the high school, and then at Horace Good, and at KH, and the elementary schools, and the intermediate centers, everything that you guys do and come up with, because, I mean, who would have thought that we would have had robotics, what, five years ago, maybe? And now we have it district-wide. So, you know, we have so many different creative people coming up with different things. It is truly appreciated, all that everyone does, that, because, you know, a teacher with a great idea, coming up with something, we really appreciate it. And the dedication of our teachers, because it's not just the coaches and the sponsors, but everything that everyone does here at this district is greatly appreciated. So thank you. Three more days, and winter break. So enjoy your break, and we'll see you guys back here very soon. So, Dr. Carlin?
Yeah, I remembered this time. Thank you.
Briefly, okay. USD 457 is the only organization in Finney County that brings somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,000 people a day together. The first rule of dealing with COVID pandemic is don't get together in large groups. Earlier tonight, I mentioned that we had 10 weeks of face-to-face learning, two weeks of hybrid, and now, as of next Tuesday, we'll finish 18 days of remote learning. The only way that happens is with the dedicated, selfless efforts of teachers, bus drivers, nutrition services workers, custodians, administrators, technology support people, and I can go on and on and on. Every job in this district is important to being able to have kids get the best possible services we can. And I guarantee you that every one of those people in every one of those jobs is making sacrifices. They're doing things differently, and their number-one goal is the success of all of our kids. So I am extremely thankful that we will be making it through winter break to winter break after having an extremely successful first, close to first semester of school. We're not going to finish our first semester until after Christmas this year. Everything's not perfect, but, folks, the dedication and the commitment of every one of those staff members is what has made this happen and will carry us through this in the spring. So a huge shout-out and a thank you to all the employees of USD 457.
Okay, the next board, meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Monday, January 11th, ooh, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room at the Educational Support Center. And we need to adjourn to executive session. I would say probably give us 10 minutes before we start, so, 7:52.
Hello?
Alan?
Madam President, I will be going to executive session at 7:52 to discuss individual employee performance pursuant to non-legal personnel exception in Tacoma, beginning, excuse me, beginning at 7:52, and the open meeting will resume at 8:52.
We have a motion to go into executive session at 8:52 or at 7:52 to come back at 8:52. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Janine. Is there any discussion? All in favor, or please raise your hand. Are we in, Dr., Mr. Marby's?
No.
Where are we going?
Do we have two rooms?
Do we have two rooms?
Let's do that.
Okay.
And I need to remember my